When I ask you to rise, I will ask you after the pledge to remain standing. So please, well actually, let me, let me mention we have reconvened with all members present. And please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the law for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we make standing, please? Just a reminder, as tomorrow is a day that we know all too well. In fact, tomorrow morning, we're going to wake up to beautiful weather. And it is, will be exactly the way it was 11 years ago. And that beautiful day turned into the darkest day in our lifetime. In fact, the perfect weather tomorrow will give us a flashback to a day we wish we could forget, but we know we should never forget. We must remember all who died, those who headed into work just like any other day, those who were on one of the planes traveling for business or pleasure, those who ran into danger to save the lives of others. Also in our prayers should be those who survived that day, but are still fighting health issues every day. I ask you for a moment of silence for all those who died on 9/11. In particular, the Madison residents, our friends, neighbors, the parents of our children's friends. Died in one World Trade Center, James L. Crawford Jr., and Peter M. West. In two World Trade Center, Timothy R. Hughes, Patrick J. McGuire. And on United Flight Airlines Flight 93, Donald A. Peterson and Jean H. Peterson. Please, a moment of silence for all. And hopefully, everyone in the audience enjoyed the end of the summer as well as we did. We did something different, which was to save one meeting in the summertime and enjoy the end of August weather, as humid as it might be. I'd like to announce the employee of the month for September, John Forte, Department of Public Works, for discovering a water leak while mowing borough-owned property and helping the water department track the leak to a fire hydrant damaged by unauthorized use. The hydrant was repaired, saving the borough water and money. And we've got a few proclamations.
Bob, you do the minutes later.
Oh, I'm on a roll here.
That's okay, we'll do it later.
If you take, you take a meeting off and all of a sudden, all heck falls through and you get off the air. We'll get back in minutes and since I'm out here. If I can have Beth Davie and Dorit Stagg and Dolly Reeve up here. This is a proclamation in recognition of the 70th anniversary of the independent thrift shop. And Beth is the current president. And we have, Dorit is a past president and the longest-running volunteer, if I understand.
I think so.
And Dolly, another past president. And if, one of the great things about doing these proclamations is to learn great stories. And this is a great story. It's how you can turn a little bad weather into a great thing. So in recognition of the 70th anniversary of the independent thrift shop. Whereas, the independent thrift shop was founded by a dedicated group of volunteers from Madison-Chatham Red Cross. And whereas, in 1972, these volunteers had planned an auction, donated items to help fund a new ambulance for Madison. But the auction was canceled due to inclement weather. And whereas, the unsold items were then taken to a store at 14 Waverly Place to sell. And whereas, the original volunteers decided to make this a permanent project and the independent thrift shop was created. Whereas, the independent thrift shop moved from 14 Central, and then over the years to 5 Central, then 15 Central, and in 1996, moved to its current location at 33 Kings Road. And whereas, independent thrift shop, through the efforts of donors and volunteers from Madison to Chatham, Floraive Park, Springfield Summit, Shore Hills, Berkeley Heights, and New Providence, provides an outstanding service for Madison and the surrounding communities. And whereas, the profits from these sales of donated items purchased by the public support make many worthwhile organizations, support many worthwhile organizations. And whereas, independent thrift shop, in seven years of operations, has donated over $1 million to charities. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby extend congratulations to the independent thrift shop on its 70th anniversary and express thanks to many volunteers who diligently contribute to its success. Do we have, do we have other volunteers in the audience that are, I want you to call the other volunteers. Yep, all the other volunteers in the thrift shop, come on up. Because, there's many hands that make this happen. Have you got some more volunteers right behind you there?
I'll say one, two, three. I'm going to say thrift. One, two, three.
One more.
One, two, three.
Five, there we go. Patrick, come on up. 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 Patrick Reineiri and Kathy McBrady, please come forward. Time to recognize very dedicated volunteers. And while it's September 10th, Christmas is right around the corner, right? Whereas, Patrick Reineiri and Kathy McBrady, longtime and highly respected volunteers for Madison Eagle Christmas Fund, are stepping down after co-chairing the fund for the past four years. And whereas, the Christmas Fund started many years ago when resident Barbara Ball, and her family decided to spread holiday cheer to a few senior citizens at Christmas time with gifts. And the tradition has grown into the Madison Eagle Christmas Fund involving many volunteers. And whereas, last year, these volunteers helped 100 households struggling with hardships to enjoy the holidays by providing with gifts of warm clothing, new shoes, food gift certificates, and toys for the children. And whereas, the gifts, which are wrapped and delivered by the volunteers, are purchased with generous donations provided by the caring community of Madison through gift drives of Madison students, merchants, and civic groups. And whereas, both Patrick Reineiri and Kathy McBrady have volunteered to shop for the Eagle Christmas Fund for over 12 years. And whereas, the Madison Eagle Christmas Fund has benefited greatly from the service of Patrick Reineiri and Kathy McBrady as co-chairpersons, who have each volunteered over 200 hours each year for the past four years. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby extend thanks and appreciation to Patrick Reineiri and Kathy McBrady for their many years as Madison Eagle Christmas Fund volunteers. Their efforts and dedication and commitment make Madison a special place to live. Thanks, Mayor. We have a few officers from the adult school, I don't know if I saw a picture. Lou, Vice President Dana, Secretary Peter Vermon, and Claire, all the representatives from the adult school. An organization near and dear to my heart, as I get to serve as a big role, he is now the chair of the board, and was chair about seven years ago, I guess. Had to step down in order to see the year. So, in recognition of the 70th anniversary, the adult school of Chatham, Madison, and Floraive Park. Whereas, 75 years ago, in 1937, the chairperson of Madison Social Planning Council called the other committee to consider the organization of an adult education school as a cooperative effort between the communities of Chatham, Madison, and Floraive Park. And whereas, this distinguished group of community leaders successfully pooled their time, talent, and finances to establish the Madison-Chatham Adult School, which is now a self-supporting nonprofit organization. And whereas, this organization, now known as the Adult School of Chatham, Madison, and Floraive Park, has a 75-year of history of continuously providing extensive and widely varied classes, readily available, and reasonable cost within the communities served to complement the more formal established school and college curriculum. And whereas, the adult school has been eminently successful in anticipating, adapting, and expanding program offerings to incorporate changes in technology designed to better meet the evolving needs and interests of people, organizations, and businesses. And whereas, the adult school offers 300 in-person classes plus 300 online classes in each semester, registers just under 4,000 students each year, has daytime evening classes at 14 different locations, and attracts students from nearly 100 zip codes. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, on behalf of the governing body, hereby recognize and honor graduate, present and past members of Board of Trustees, faculty, and staff of the adult school of Chatham, Madison, and Floraive Park, for their vision, foresight, and dedication to the organization and for its 75th successful year in increasing more valuable resource for lifelong education in our communities. Thank you so much.
While the photographer gets ready. On behalf of the adult school and all its members, I'd like to thank the mayor and council, each one of you, for all the support you've given us. You've helped us through a flood back last fall, and you've helped us as we improve our environment. Thank you very much.
Well, tough, tough day for campus. We're just very small fletch guns. One, thank you very much. And on to the next one we find here.
Hey, quote, there's an ad on TV on television that said, "A mind is a terrible thing to waste. We encourage all of you to not break your minds, sign up for an adult school course, two or three of them, and come and watch."
So before I wrap up my greetings, let's go to minutes for approval. I have a motion for the executive minutes of May 30th, 2012.
Yes, I move that as amended.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have just this to discuss, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Our motion for the regular minutes of May 30th, 2012.
I move the minutes as amended.
Second.
Actually, this was regular minutes, so.
The changes were at our seats.
As submitted, okay, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Catellinello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Our executive minutes of June 11th, 2012.
Yes, move as amended.
Second.
And this was discussed, roll call, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Catellinello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
And regular minutes of June 11th, 2012.
I move that.
Second.
Ms. Jeannie.
Yes, a minor change on page four, under public safety, fifth line, issue re-school officer Lisa Esposito and Project Prize staff, period.
Okay.
That's it.
Anything else? All right. Vote as amended.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Catellinello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
All right, a motion for executive minutes of June 25th, 2012.
Move as amended.
Second.
And that's been discussed.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yes.
Mr. Catellinello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
All right, now I have a much shorter greeting to the public than I would have had a few minutes ago. Just a few things. Last week, in the pouring rain, Bob Landrigan and I went up to Drew University to meet with their civic scholars, and these are the students that are provided scholarships, provided that they are very active in volunteerism. And it's just, it's not after the fact they need to show a history of volunteerism before they are accepting the program. And first of all, to listen to some of the projects they have worked on, from building homes in Guatemala to helping local senior homes, was quite impressive. Bob did a little pitch on being a, become a volunteer for the ambulance corps, and we both talked about the value of being a volunteer, not only for the results, been working in various organizations, but for their own growth. And I think it was a very helpful thing, and when it comes around, Bob, you can add any more comments at your report. On the library, when a lot of things may slow down in the summer, the library certainly doesn't. Close to 800 children and teens participated in the summer reading club, recording over 5,700 hours of reading. Library patrons borrowed over 36,000 books and media from the library during July and August. The library and Madison Senior Center cosponsored a successful series of lectures that attracted over 800 attendees. And the Friends of the Library sponsored Touch a Truck, that was, if anyone was there, it was a great event, a little on the hot side, but fun had by children of all ages and raised, I believe, over $20,000. And the library trustees are meeting tonight, just in case you don't like what you see here, and I'm missing that meeting. They had to rearrange their schedule, so they will not be meeting next week. Also, to announce that we had listed an ordinance 24, 2012 for introduction, which was related to the hiring process for police chief. We have appointed a subcommittee of Jeannie Tsukamoto, Carmela Vitale, and Bob Landrigan. They will be working on various models for ordinances, and Bill will be reporting back, so we will not be moving that forward tonight. And if I can have Matt make an announcement related to the PBA contract.
As you might know, we went to interest arbitration with the PBA last April of 2011. The arbitrator, Bob Glasson, issued his award this summer. What we did is we appealed a very narrow issue in the award. Perk denied our appeal on that narrow issue, and so we're not going to pursue any further appeals. It's my recognition, I think the governing body concurs, that we're going to implement the award that was body arbitration issued by Bob Glasson last month.
Thank you very much. And one last announcement. In the goal of the borough to offload property that is no longer necessary, 10 Maple Avenue, which was once the home of our senior center before they moved on to Walnut Street, and also the home for Recreation Department, we've been working towards putting that out on the, out for auction. The planning subdivision has been done, and we are tentatively set for auction on October 18th. More information will be posted on RoseNet, so please, spread the word for anyone that is interested in putting a bid on that. And now for reports from committees. Public Safety, Ms. Tsukamoto.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. The Madison Police Department will be hosting a prescription drug drop-off program again on Saturday, September 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the lobby of the police headquarters. We encourage residents to help get prescription drugs out of our homes and streets and to dispose of them properly. All schools are now open. The police department asks everyone to drive carefully. The Park Avenue road construction is now complete, but there is still road construction at night in the center of town from the hours of 9:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. Detour routes have been set up for a safe traffic flow. September, it's November, it's National Preparedness Month. We encourage residents to be ready. Please visit www.reddy nj.gov for complete information. In the month of August, the police department responded to 25 car accidents, 64 medical calls, made 16 arrests, and had 2,225 calls for service. The Madison Fire Department is in need of volunteers. Many of you might have read the Volunteer Firefighter Campaign Letter in the recent utility bills and articles in the Madison Eagle and Madison Patch. If you reside in Madison, or within two miles of our borders, or between 18 and 35, have never been convicted of a crime, and are in good physical and mental health, we ask that you consider volunteering. Please visit www.madisonfd.com for more information and to download an application. The new Complete Streets Committee met for the first time and had a very productive meeting. The committee is continuing the safety improvement efforts around Torrey J. and the Junior School. We are making good progress with the Department of Transportation, and there is a resolution this evening to support lowering the speed limit to 25 miles per hour on Main Street in front of the Junior School. Information on sharing the road, bike lane guidelines, and bicycle safety are now posted on RoseNet website. The committee is also working on improving safety for all commuters. The Museum of Early Trades and Crafts in the historic James Library Building is listed on both New Jersey and National Registers of Historic Places. In June of 2011, the museum received a $34,000 grant from Morris County Preservation Historic Trust to fund a preservation study and plan. The study revealed that the moisture issues that the building has been experiencing are caused by a variety of entry points, including the basement, masonry, and roof. The plan also provides a $2 million outline of necessary repairs. The plan has been additionally broken down into multiple phases, which can be completed independently of each other for amounts of $500,000 or less. This allows the museum to address the areas of greatest needs as fast as they can raise the funds. In June, the museum received an additional $32,000 grant from Morris County Historic Preservation Trust to prepare construction documents. They are continuing to apply for all available government and foundation funding opportunities. They are also currently seeking funds to hire a consulting firm for the upcoming major capital campaign. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the electrical side, there was the primary electrical service that was completed for 175 Park Avenue, which is the new Realogy Corporation building. So their primary services has been installed. They continue to go around and maintain and upgrade the transmissions lines in our town, as well as tree services that are going around to maintain any overhanging branches. Especially recently, we've had some branches come down with this weird and wacky weather we've been having. So, they're, they're going around and, and we had some, a few residents lose power for downed trees. On the water side, the mayor mentioned the fact that there was a hydrant problem, and one of the borough workers found. The water department will be going around and doing a maintenance program of the hydrants, as well as checking to make sure that there's no other leaks that may be around. Also, within the last month or so, we had a meeting about asset management programs for the water and electric utilities. We should be getting the reports from them very, very soon, and we'll be getting together to discuss what our future plans are in terms of asset management. And on a planning board side, we really, we had a little bit of a mild summer vacation, so we are going to be meeting this month to, to kind of discuss further the LED ordinance and to kind of fine tune that to make sure that we're not leaving anything out. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Links.
Thank you, Mayor Conley. Before I present my committee reports, may I speak on behalf of the Madison Athletic This evening, I would like to announce the Madison Athletic Foundation's donation of the fieldhouse at the Madison Recreation Complex to the people of Madison. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Ray Cody and the following borough employees for all of their extra efforts on behalf of the Madison Athletic Foundation, David Mainz and other members of the Department of Public Works, Michael Piano and other members of the Electrical Utility, Robert Vogel, Russ Brown, Daniel Bugloo and Dennis Harrington of the Engineering Lab Use Department, Lieutenant Darren Dashison, Officer Joseph Longo and other members of the Madison Police Department, Jim Sanderson and A.J. Rangoud of the Information Technology Department, and Chief Fluta Rose and other members of the Madison Fire Department. Engineering has been involved in many issues since our last meeting. A municipal aid application for partial funding of the construction of Green Avenue from Woodland to Sean Pike has been drafted and will be submitted to the State of New Jersey Department of Transportation this week. An informal public hearing has been scheduled to review plans for Green Avenue, Sampson Avenue, Rosedale Avenue road improvements, and Ridgedale Avenue water main improvements on September 24th at 6:00 p.m. The Park Avenue paving project was completed by the County of Morris, resulting in narrower lanes and wider shoulders. Special thanks to county staff who are cooperating with Madison's suggestions for traffic coming. The State of New Jersey plans to finish East Main Street paving work this month. Residents and business owners will see improvements to sidewalk, apron, handicap ramps, and drainage castings. Final paving and striping are also scheduled this month. Public Service Electric and Gas Company has been making progress on the Main Street gas main replacement between Green Village Road and Waverly Place the past two weeks. The work is being completed, and I do to traffic concerns. However, loud construction noise has been recorded after midnight disturbing apartments in the commercial downtown area. While borough employees have been advising PSENG and its contractors during the evening hours, Madison does not control the contractors, and complaints must be presented to PSENG. We hope again the central business district will be completed in September. The consulting firm of CM Associates has been working on an assessment of Candlewood, Tredwell, and West End Palm Stations, and their final report is due in the next two weeks. Significant improvements will be implemented over the next year with the current capital appropriations. The Madison Building Department completed final inspections at the Madison Recreation Complex, and the fieldhouse is now open for public use. Appliances, range hood, and fire protection were installed, and PSENG installed the gas meter last Thursday. The DPW is advancing concrete sidewalk construction and will topsoil and seed in the next two weeks. Once slopes are stabilized, work improving the rain gardens will commence, and the site will then be ready for final paving. Additional bases and anchors are being installed in the new synthetic turf due to team demands. Also, the maintenance shed is now complete, and brooming machinery is on site and operating. The fields will be groomed monthly by DPW. The fields will be groomed monthly by DPW staff or trained volunteers. The Department of Public Works has nothing to report at this time.
Thank you very much. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you, Mayor. In anticipation of the November 6th general election, the clerk's office will remain open for late-night voter registration on October 16th, 2012, until 8:00 p.m. Applications for vote-by-mail ballots and voter registration forms are available in the borough clerk's office or online at morriselections, it's one word, morriselections.org. Just to refresh everyone's memory, the Democratic candidates for council in this year's election in Madison are Astri Bailey of East Lane and Benjamin Wolkowitz of Delwood Drive. The Republican candidates for council are John F. Hoover of Overhill Drive and Carmen Pico of North Street. I'm pleased to report that Eagle Scout Joseph Falco from Madison Troop 25 will be working on a six-tenths-of-a-mile trail project in the old growth forest section of the Madison, of the MRC property. Trails were initially marked out in the fall by Madison resident Subasine and Madison High School cross-country coach Mark La Dolcetta. Sue is a member of the MRC Passive Recreation Committee. Representatives from Shade Tree Management Board and Parks Advisory Committee walked the trails last week and approved the layout. Borough engineer Bob Vogel has also reviewed and approved the project. A work date is tentatively set for October 20th. We are hoping to have cadets from West Point come down and help as part of a service project. Special thanks to Reverend Nancy Lynch of the Presbyterian Church of Madison, whose daughter is currently a cadet at West Point and is helping to organize the work group. Joseph is also hoping to initiate an Audubon Sanctuary Program for the area. More information about the program will be available in the coming weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, at the Madison Senior Center, health classes will be getting, will be starting shortly, and they're going to include gentle yoga and Zumba Gold. My wife is trying to get me a nose, it's not going to happen. Okay. On September 12th, they will be sponsoring an annual day at the shore, which will include stops at Jack Baker's in Point Pleasant, the Ocean Grove Boardwalk, and shopping at Delicious Orchards. The last one is the place I like to go, that's why I don't go with the yoga. Okay, and finally, on September 19th, there is going to be a public information sent session on updates to Medicare. It's going to be called Medicare Now What. It's going to focus on coverage by the State Health Insurance Assistance Program. A portion of the program will target baby boomers and caregivers who are new to Medicare with tips on navigating the Medicare website. Okay. The Madison High School Marching Dodgers will be hosting a tournament of the bands that will be held on Sunday, October 7th, from 1:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. They expect to have 10 marching bands and as many as 2,500 to 3,000 visitors. I attended it last year, it's something to behold, it's really a nice event. Okay. The Chamber of Commerce would like to announce that on October 6th, there will be Bottle Hill Day, along with the Antique Car and Custom Car Show. October 21st to 28th is Madison Restaurant Week, and October 27th is Halloween Hoopla, Parade, and Magic Show. And in regards to the mayor and my visit to Drew, what impressed me was there were about, I would say, 30 students in the room. These weren't students that were forced to be there, they wanted to be there. They expressed interest in each of the volunteer organizations that were there speaking. The feeling I got is that Drew is making a commitment to this area. They want to get involved. And speaking of personal experience on the squad, we've had a number of Drew students serve on the ambulance corps. They've been exemplary, they've been a big help to us, and I think this partnership will go a long way to helping Madison. Thank you, Mayor.
And speaking of the squad, do we have a pig roast coming up? Do you want to plug that while you're?
Yes, on September 29th, if I have the date right, at, starting at 4:00 p.m., there will be a pig roast and beer garden at the Madison Volunteer Ambulance Corps. You can buy tickets at the door, the proceeds go to support the squad. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. And Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a message from Christine Schessler of the Madison Health Department. A Matter of Balance classes are designed to reduce the fear of falling and increase activity levels among older adults. Participants learn to set realistic goals to increase activity, change their environment to reduce fall risk factors, and learn simple exercises to increase their strength and their balance. Classes are going to start on October 2nd and will run from November, until November 27th. It'll be Tuesday mornings from 9:30 to 11:30, and it's at the Madison Area YMCA. The program donation is $10. Just a little extra plug about this, they've been doing Matter of Balance classes in other towns, so, and they have been extremely successful. So anybody who would like to attend, please think about that, and it's very convenient at the Madison Y. We also received today a note about the number of the West Nile virus cases in our state. They've increased to 15, including New Jersey's first death, which is an elderly Burlington County man. Madison, Madison has been treated pretty much, right, Ray? Morris County Mosquito Commission has been down, they've been over at the MRC, you know, making sure that everything is okay, so we're, we're in pretty good straits. But what the recommendation is, is that just be very careful of standing water, because this draws mosquitoes and whatever. And to protect yourself when you're outside using repellent, you're wearing long sleeves, long pants, I don't know, with that humidity, I don't know how that was going to happen, but, and to be very careful about the removing of the standing water in this area. So I think that we have to just be a little bit on the careful side at this point and be thankful that our Morris County Mosquito Commission is taking good care of us here. Also, from the Health Department, from Flo Rice, seasonal influenza, flu immunizations will be administered to Madison residents aged 50 and over on Wednesday, October 3rd and Thursday, October 11th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. at the Madison Health Department at the Madison Civic Center on Walnut Street in Madison. Adult residents under the age of 50 can be immunized only if they have a note from their doctor verifying their chronic illnesses. Seniors do not need a physician's note, there's no appointments that are necessary. The immunizations are free to seniors with a Medicare B card, and there will be a $25 charge for all others. I, I would recommend that everybody use the facilities of the Madison Health Department. There's a lot down there, so if you go in for a flu shot, ask the ladies, those are, they're great nurses. Ask them about the other programs that you could be involved with. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
All right, this is our first of two invitations of the public to share their thoughts, and restrictions on this round, again, are items on the agenda discussions and resolutions, not ordinances. So under our agenda discussions, we have MRC Field House building donation, Green Avenue State Grant application, LED price point signs, appropriation of 150,000 water capital, Senate Bill 1534 equalizing standing of private and public colleges before land use organizations. If you really want to comment on things, November Council meeting date, because we have a conflict with our first meeting of the month, and what has been pulled, because it's got to need more review, the amendment to Chapter 139 peddling and soliciting, again, that ordinance introduction has been pulled, and so same with the discussion. And then we also have amendment to Chapter 134 parking lots. Those guidelines, is anyone wishing to comment on any of those agenda discussions or resolutions listed on the consent agenda? Please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to be heard?
Sam Sursi, Oak Park Avenue, Madison. Can't talk about any of the ordinances, is that?
Right, right. It's, those, those have hearings. Either the ones, some for introduction are on the agenda, and others will have a hearing. If not tonight, they'll have a hearing in two weeks. So just resolutions or the agenda items.
All right, that Resolution 1A, MRC Field House donation, can you explain that after I ask? I got a few I just want to ask about. I'll ask off first, then you can answer the ones you want.
So the MRC donation, we'll actually cover, you'll hear that shortly about that, so we'll, since that's a agenda discussion.
And then ordinance 27, amendment to the Chapter 138 peddling, can you explain that to me later on, or whenever? What is that all about?
The, that, that is the one that is being pulled, so that will be on the discussion agenda at the next meeting.
And the parking lot, is that the situation with these 23 spaces over here?
Correct.
And then, you're going to, you're going to explain what's going to take place?
Yep.
All right. Can't even talk about the consent agenda?
So the resolutions on the consent agenda, yes, you may comment on those, or?
Okay, on Resolution 216?
Which is Green Avenue State Grant Application.
Okay, what I'm trying to say is on like 216 and 217, when we, when we get a grant, to my understanding, that anybody in New Jersey or the county, or they could come and use this field, is that what we're saying, once we get money from the?
On, on green acres, the intention of green acres is to preserve open space for the enjoyment of residents of the state. The, it is, it falls under control of the local entity, so in Madison, when we take green acres money, we can schedule it. If the field is available, we cannot turn people away, but Madison residents get first, and we're allowed to charge a reasonable fee, fee for the use of any fields that are supported by green acres. But it does not force us to say, you from East Oshkosh get to use a field before Madison, Madison residents, Madison gets a priority.
Well, over the last weekend, a couple, a couple of people involved in sports told me that there was people from out of town using our fields, and they're all wet and everything. Who watches to make sure these, these people don't come from other towns and just use our fields if nobody's on them?
It would be under our control to shut down the fields and take appropriate action.
It happened a couple of times, the field, you know.
So I, I, I would recommend you make a phone call so, so either the police or someone can react, because obviously when people use a grass field after a heavy rain, it'll do some damage.
All right, and that Resolution 215, the amendment with the Teamsters agreement, what is that all about?
Do you want me to help out?
Yes, that would be great.
That's a, a, a change to a title that the Teamsters are going to recognize as no longer a member of their bargaining unit. It's a title that we've deemed that will be, is a management title. And it's not appropriate for inclusion in a rank-and-file bargaining unit.
And the, one thing I don't understand is, you have to adjust the ranges of salaries for, why, why don't we adjust the range salaries? Why do we have to?
Yeah, periodically salary ranges may be adjusted, and this does not translate to automatic salary increase, but a salary adjustment ordinance would go through to make sure that the salaries for the particular position match the market in the real world, that we, we don't have positions that are no longer, you know, what you hate to see happen is you have someone leave a position because the salary they're getting paid, and then right away a salary adjustment is made because it was so out of whack with the reality. So we periodically adjust salary ranges, and so that was just to?
What I mean is like, if you hire somebody like, salaries, X amount of dollars, like hire a bricklayer, he gets X, and every year he gets a raise, I mean, you know, I don't understand the range, I think.
Yep, and again, ti- time is up, but just again to reinforce it is the fact that it doesn't translate into automatic raises for anyone, it just is a recognition of the salary range, that, and what the market would pay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Mr. Harrington, welcome back from Newport, I take it? We've missed you this summer.
Certainly have, Tim Harrington to Cross Gates Road, Lakeview Avenue, Newport. I would like to commend Newport for putting in about 15 miles of paved roads at a hell of a lot less than we pay. For the first time in a long time, we've at least attempted to explain the difference between Discussions Number One for the public and Discussions Number Two for the public. I think in the future that would be very useful, and might be even more useful, next to invitations for discussions to explain, since we jump around, it doesn't go in sequence, which ones are to be covered in the first one, and then which ones can be covered in the second one, so the public can have some informed understanding of how things work. I know it's not new to this council, it's been going on for a long time, but it might be very useful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard on discussion items or resolutions?
I'm Sandeep Hutt from 117 Green Avenue, and this is regarding the Green Avenue project, of course. First of all, on behalf of all the residents in the area, I would like to express my appreciation for the standing Tuesday morning meetings, the council and the big setup. They have proven very useful, both in keeping all the residents in the loop and in providing input. And I would urge the council that as we move on to the next stages of this process and do it right this time, that we continue with, with the standing meeting. Second, I understood from, in discussions with, with members of the council over the summer, that last year in discussions about the Green Avenue road reconstruction, there were some perceived engineering design deficiencies that were pointed out specifically by Mr. Cattinello. Mr. Vogel assures me that the plan is sound, and that any minor issues that need to be adjusted can be done easily with the construction engineers once a project begins. So what I would like to hear tonight, if this issue has already been resolved between the council members and Mr. Vogel satisfactorily, I'd like to hear that the issues, this perception no longer exists. And if it has not been resolved, then I urge you to settle the matter before the September 24th forum meeting with the, with the public, one way or the other. This is something that's entirely within the control of, local control, so I think we should just get that out of the way. The third point I want to make is that, and we brought this up at every Tuesday meeting that we did have, there are a number of new potholes that have opened up. There was some patching done late in the spring, and I don't know if the second round patching was done as, as was promised in one of the meetings, but I've noticed that there are several new holes that have opened up in Green Avenue. So it shouldn't really be that hard to actually get DPW down to fix a few, few potholes.
Thank you very much, and we'll follow through with DPW. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on items on the agenda? Seeing none, I close this part of the agenda and move on to agenda discussions. MRC Field House donation, what we can do is discussion, and then we'll actually, since I know there's some people in the audience, we can do, move the resolution now as opposed to wait until the consent agenda. All right, and, oops. Mr. Lynx, do you want to?
Let me just bring everyone up to speed, as you know. As you know, we have a donation for the Fieldhouse to the Borough of Madison that's been built down at the recreation facility through donations. I've spoken to the attorney who represents the Fieldhouse, um, construction project. Uh, as of right now, there's no liens or encumbrances on it, and we will be getting a letter from the, uh, Madison Athletic Foundation gifting it to us. A letter's been prepared, Mr. Coviallo is gonna be sending it over to Ray Cody, but he has every indication that they are donating it to the Borough of Madison, so it would be appropriate to gift it, and we have done title searches on it, and there are no liens or encumbrances as of this afternoon on that property.
So are we ready to move the resolution?
Yes, you're ready to move it.
Um, I move resolution two twenty-six dash two thousand twelve.
Second discussion? Roll call vote?
May I?
Oh, yes.
We're kind of out of order here, so, Matt, can I just make one comment?
I will, as part of the discussion, I will invite Representative of the MAF to step to the?
I apologize for my tired, but I just called to order following a football practice. Nino Coviallo, Matt, pleasure to meet you, um, representing the Madison Athletic Foundation. I think I'm the secretary, but I'm not sure, also the attorney. Uh, the only caveat that I'd like, first of all, thank you very much for accepting our donation. Uh, Mr. Vogel seems to think that's the second building that's ever been donated to the Borough of Madison. The first one might be this one, so I'll take second place any time compared to this. The only thing I'd, I'd ask, with a special caveat, given that Madison Junior Football donated all the appliances in the kitchen, I would hope that we could somehow, um, afford or reserve the right to use and supervise the maintenance of it, and to make sure that it's properly used, given that soccer's gonna be down there, field hockey, football, girls' softball, baseball will be down there also. We just want to make sure that there's just one, uh, organization that's gonna maintain it and make sure that it's properly used for health and safety purposes. I don't think it's asking very much, given that we donated almost fifteen thousand dollars worth of appliances, and we just want to make sure that they're, they're there for quite a while.
Should that be added to resolution, or can we put up a procedure of?
I mean, I think, I think that frankly, if you're getting a, a gift, I understand what Mr. Coviallo is saying, I think that'll be difficult to have one entity supervising another, I think that that's why we have the Board of Health Administration, um, and we should note that and, and make sure that it's being used appropriately and properly, um, because it's made up of, you know, many people donated it. I think that would be difficult to put into resolution.
The only thing I'm, Matt, give, um, with all due respect, I understand where you're coming from, we also, uh, Madison Football already does this, uh, we do it down at the hut. I'm just trying to continue that practice that we have down at Dodge Field.
I, I think what we can do is, then, use a similar procedure that we have for Dodge Field, I don't think there is any formal resolution that, when that was accepted, so if we, um, as a side issue, come up with a procedure, and whether it's a sign-off, that, whatever's in place for Dodge Field.
Let's just continue the same practice, that's all I'm asking.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
The same practice isn't a problem at all, and you could even come up with a procedure, whereby you appoint the, uh, the, the direct football to overlook that, I think that'd be a more appropriate manner of doing it.
I just want to continue the same practice that we've implemented down at Dodge.
If you, Mr. Coviallo, when you, we get, the letter was emailed to you, we did the title search, everything's clean on it, uh, we're gonna order title insurance on the property as well, just to ensure that there's no lien claim, but the title search came back completely free, clear of any liens. So if you could just send a letter to Ray Cody, appreciate it.
The, the letter will be forthcoming, be delivered personally by me tomorrow.
All right. All right, so we're fine, that will stay, procedure will stay outside the resolution because we're accepting the gift as is, and we'll have the procedures in there.
And you got, we received our CO today, so.
Yep.
And, and our first football games were this weekend, and we, the junior football teams did very, very well. Uh, thank you, I also want to thank you for the, uh, hopefully the approval that will be forthcoming for the Huddle Club Raffle. I just put my president's hat on.
Thank you, and thank you for the effort of everyone that made that Fieldhouse a reality.
They wanted to count it.
Okay, roll call vote?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, Green Avenue State Grant Application. Yep, Mr. Vogel's in the, uh, audience. Step up.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, no surprise, the Green Avenue, uh, uh, application for state municipal aid, uh, has been drafted and circulated, I believe, in your packets. Uh, so the agenda recommendation covers a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant application, uh, on a, let's see, what is the overall number for the, for the?
Six twenty-nine, is it?
Six twenty-nine, was it?
Yep, so forty percent is what we're?
And, and that six twenty-nine number included a contingency number as well, because there would be inspection, and there would be a five percent contingency attached to it as well, so, um, overall, we believe that amount of funding is sufficient to cover the complete cost of constructing Green Avenue, uh, and again, all sidewalks will be replaced, all new curbing will be installed, all new drainage will be installed, and, uh, mill and overlay on the entire road will be completed. So it's a significant project, and we're certainly hoping to get state participation in it. It's got a very high, uh, average daily traffic count, and so it should rank, uh, well in the state's analysis. We also, earlier this year, uh, passed the Complete Streets Ordinance, which also will help us in the rankings as far as the state evaluation is concerned, so we're hoping for a positive response from them.
Jeanie?
Yep, um, regarding the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar, how was that determined? If I remember correctly, in the past, uh, many of our grant applications asked for fifty percent of funding, but for this particular one, we're asking for forty.
The, uh, if you look back through the history over the five, even going back as far as ten years, Jeanie, that, uh, the state's awards always fluctuate between a hundred-and-fifty and two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. So already for, uh, municipality in Morris County, I think we're looking at the upper end of the awards that are generally made from DOT municipal aid for a project of this type. Uh, I don't mind bumping it up, they'll probably pare it back if we do so, they might pare it back even if we don't. Uh, so, um, it's, uh, again, it's, I, I gave it our, our, what I thought was a competitive number, and it's certainly able to be adjusted as you see fit, as the governing body sees fit.
Is there any downside for asking more?
Um, I think as long as we're throwing fifty percent at the project, there's no downside.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do we want to ask for more money, if there's no downside?
Yep. So we can amend, um, resolution two sixteen to, uh, up it to fifty percent?
Happy to do it.
Yep.
Three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars? Should the number be three fourteen, so we're just under fifty percent now?
Yep.
Yep. So three fourteen. Sold. Okay, that's listed on the consent agenda, and we'll, uh?
I can, I, if, if it needs a calculation, I'll give Liz the right number, yeah.
Bob, while you're up there, let's jump to number three, which is also yours, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars Water Capital Improvement Fund for several projects on the five-year capital plan?
Yes, we had a number of, um, I suppose surprises over the past month in the water system, um, and I think as a result of that, Sal Diviasa, Water Superintendent for the Water Department, uh, is going to recommend that we advance some of the, uh, items that were normally on our five-year capital improvement program, which is a longer-term projection, try to advance those, uh, projects to the present year, since we're not expending money on any other projects from Water Capital, where Capital seems to be, uh, in reasonable shape for two thousand and twelve. Uh, he had asked for, uh, a, six, uh, independent projects that were fairly small dollar in, in nature. Uh, one had to do with valve replacements, the other had to do with a repair, uh, on the demister component of the airstripper at well D. Um, another had to do with chlorine parts, uh, for the chemical feed system, uh, which is a disinfection component, obviously a very important part of our system. Um, there's a radio, uh, backup communications for the skater system that's in there, um, and well-level indicators, which, again, have gone past their useful life and apparently aren't providing us with reasonable data any longer, so they have to be replaced, and Sal's asking for that hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars to cover all those projects, and, uh, that'd be my recommendation, that we move forward with it.
Questions? All right, that is ordinance twenty-six, two thousand and twelve, which is listed for introduction. And, okay, thank you, Bob. Yep.
We're gonna try to have a community hearing on Rosedale, Ridgeville.
Yep, we?
Community hearing.
The, make the, you want to go ahead and announce the Green Avenue and Rosedale, Ridgeville?
I believe Mr. Links had copied it in, in, in his report, I just want to echo the fact that we have an informal public hearing scheduled, uh, before the next council meeting at six PM, is it right?
Yes, correct.
So we're gonna do six PM, uh, just before the next council meeting, I believe it's the twenty-fourth of September, uh, two weeks from today, and, uh, we'll be happy to present all the plans, specifications, and cost estimates for, uh, Green Avenue is project number one, for, uh, Rosedale Avenue, which is project number two, um, for, let's see, number three?
Ridgeville.
Ridgeville Avenue Water Line would be project number three, and I believe there's one more that we have on the list. Una momento.
Sampson.
That's correct. Sampson Avenue is a federal, uh, federal aid project for Saferoots, the school, which we also have to get out there and make sure the public is, uh, is aware and, uh, happy with the improvements that we've suggested on paper, so it'd be great to see, uh, people at the meeting, before the meeting, and, uh, we look forward to presenting that information to the public.
And that date will share with the council, though we don't need, everyone there, I think we had a, we have a critical mass for next, uh, the twenty-fourth at six o'clock, and normal procedure with these, if it goes past?
Just a reminder, um, if you recall, at the last informal meeting for Green Avenue, they were scheduled all the way toward the end, so if, and they had to wait an hour or a half, um, to get to their turns, if you would, please, um, put them first on the agenda, that would be?
Seems like a reasonable place to put them at this stage of the game.
Yep, thank you.
Number one.
All right, let's move to, back to agenda item number two, which is LED price-point signs. This is a discussion on ordinance, um, we previously had passed an ordinance that basically bans LED, uh, signs in the borough, but the reality is, gas stations are moving towards that, and they really, you can't even get the old style, and my feeling is it's an improvement over what used to be out there. Um, we, we have a draft ordinance, and as, uh, Dr. Esposito and I both serve on the planning board with this, and we've had our input, and as I have reviewed this myself, I don't think it's quite ready yet, and my, um, as I look at it, things I've learned about LED lighting, more I ever wanted to know, and also learned about gas station regulations, that's probably more, it's, uh, to this point. One, if a gas station is advertising or sells at a cash price and a credit price, they have to at least have the regular price listed twice, showing the discounted and the full price. Um, if they sell diesel, the requirement typically is they have to show the three regular prices and the price of diesel. So as I look at all these requirements, and then there's twenty-five square feet maximum, I don't think it's quite realistic to get all the prices in there and this brand name. And I've, uh, looking at, uh, we have two LED, uh, signs in existing, existence right now, one is at the Shell Station, one is Sunoco, and if you look at both of them, the, the sign for the brand is relatively small, and the price sign is fairly standard. So what I would suggest to send back to the planning board, and we can take it back, is a, you know, based on how many prices a gas station's required to show, is a guideline per, per price with a maximum for the brand name. Uh, Dr. Esposito, you want to share any other thoughts?
No, actually, it was very similar comments, uh, from that, and we have to kind of, because there probably, you probably know the three or four different types of, uh, gas stations still out there that have not transferred over to that, but we want to make sure that we have everything fair and compliant, not only with their regulations, but what we want as well for the town of, of Madison, so, um, you know, we'll have to kind of adjust some of the numbers and, uh, and, and square footage of the, of the signs and the, and the LEDs, uh, to do that.
And just to add, I, I think the, some of the key things should remain, the maximum height, because you, you, if you look at the two gas stations, one is higher than the other, I, I think, uh, keeping them from being too high, the canopy signs limited to twenty percent and so on, I think all those are good, it's just the, we have to be realistic as to the space for pricing. Any other thoughts?
Right, no.
Uh, Jeanie?
Yep, um, question regarding section three E. This is about, um, the price signs located adjacent to any single or multifamily home. Um, it states that they shall be turned off after ten PM. Now, what time does the gasoline station close, and is that, is that a, how was that determined? That, that's a question. And also, um, second question is, is it just for locating on any lots adjacent to, um, residential homes, or it's visible to any residential homes?
It is adjacent, um, and I, I think, as I read this, maybe add to it, um, regardless of whether adjacent or not, all lights should be off when the gas station is closed, so they're not advertising the price when they're, they're open, so we can add that to the?
And also to consider whether or not that will coincide with their closing hour.
Right.
Um, and also, it would be nice also to consider, is it just adjacent to a home, or, um, for the sign which is visible to the residential area? If you can take that back, to consider that as well.
Mayor, can I, I just ask a question? Um, are, are they still going to be required to come to the planning board then? You know, with, with a site plan and, and whatever?
If, if they have a, if they had a sign that was compliant with the new ordinance, they would not be required, they'd have to do a building, a permit application on signage, but if they're within, um, the guidelines of the ordinance, they would not have to go to the planning board.
Okay, so who determines if they're in compliance?
Right now, the same process of zoning, go to the zoning officer.
The zoning officer, okay, all right.
Any other thoughts to send back? So we'll send this back to the, uh, planning board, we have at least one other member in the audience. Okay, uh, Senate Bill fifteen thirty-four, equalizing the standing of private and public colleges before land use agencies. If you remember, we passed a resolution that was sent to the, um, Senate, uh, offering our opposition to a law that would exempt private colleges from local, going through local zoning boards and planning boards for approval, and the Senate still passed that, is now up, will be coming through the Assembly. We have, uh, we've joined up with, I have signed a letter with other mayors, with universities in towns, to, uh, show our, um, opposition to this bill. It, uh, we have a very good neighbor in Drew University, but we also need to make sure that there's a process where they get approvals for any, um, additions, dorms, anything that is built. There's, uh, Fairleigh Dickinson has, uh, frontage on Madison Avenue, which would also, which is in Madison, all of a sudden, that could be developed without our input, so I think it's, we need to, uh, proceed. We will be going to Trenton to, uh, voice our displeasure directly with that, and continue with all possibilities to, um, show that this is not a good idea. Any other thoughts? November council meeting date, so we have, uh, our second Monday is Veterans Day?
Yes.
Which we normally would shift it to that Wednesday, which is the League of Municipalities, so we have a double conflict, and thought is, move it to the first Monday?
Which would be the fifth. That would be November the fifth, but it's the day before the election.
The day before the election.
That would be, just to let everyone know.
Is that, uh?
Is that work for everyone, that we move it? I think since we're, we can't, we don't have the flexibility to cancel it outright. It's, we got three meetings, you know, November, December, there's three meetings to the end of the year, and if you lose that, it's going to be tough to pass any ordinances.
Does this day create a hardship for the clerk's office?
Well, we'll work out something. If we could promise to be out of here by ten o'clock, since the polls open.
Two long days for them.
So when we do the agenda, a reminder will go out that a clerk that doesn't get sleep two nights in a row is not a happy clerk.
Your election results may be...
Right. Could be an automatic recount. Okay?
But I'll work with my staff.
Okay, very good. Amendment to chapter one thirty-four, parking lots. And this, we had the discussion, the designation of parking spaces is outlined by ordinance, so we have to introduce and pass ordinance to change the amendment, or amend the ordinances. Any other discussion on this? Jeanie, you...
Yep, many of you may recall, at the last council meeting, the governing body decided that we're going to create additional commuter parking spots using our employee lot right next door over here, Maple Avenue. And those two, twenty, twenty, we discussed twenty-three, but in actuality, there will be twenty, I believe, from the administrators that can be created, converting them from employee spots to commuter spots. Those twenty will be added to the other spots from other parking lots. And as a result of that, twenty additional parking spots will be added to the daily spots. What this means is the additional twenty spots will be sold at five dollar apiece on a daily basis to commuters. This will result in approximately twenty-six thousand dollars additional revenue for the borough. So certainly, this is, this is a good utilization of extra spaces we have in order to generate additional revenue. So a couple of people I would like to thank. One is to thank Mr. Bob Jennings, which I mentioned at the last council meeting. He was the one who alerted us to the underutilization of the parking spaces next door, so thank him for bringing that to our attention. Also, would like to thank Connie Phillips at the Madison Police Department for letting us know that there is a high demand of daily spots every day for commuters. And with this change, it will accommodate both the high demand and utilize our underutilized spaces. So it's a good thing for the borough, and good thing for the commuters.
All right, and this is listed for introduction. All right, this closes this section of the agenda. We now move on to ordinances for hearing.
Ordinances scheduled for hearing were introduced by title and passed on first reading at the regular meeting of the council, held on Monday, August thirteenth, two thousand twelve. All were posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to members of the general public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance eighteen, two thousand twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating four hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for improvements to the North Street Pump Station.
I open the hearing. Is there anyone in the public wishing to comment on ordinance eighteen, two thousand twelve? Sam?
Sam Cerceau Park, the reason I wanted to mention this on my first, is those, I'm so glad we're doing these funds, because I agree a hundred percent, this is the most important thing in town, but you got three pump stations, and you're just going to spend three quarters of a million dollars. Could these be three different contractors? I mean, what I'm suggesting is that, we're appropriating the money, why don't we get one consultant and one set of architect to put the whole thing together, use one contractor, send it out as one, the whole three pump stations? Don't try to get three different contractors, because you get a, you get a, you get a better contractor, because we went through this thing with North Street Pump Station, the guy wasn't even qualified. So the point I'm getting at is you get rid of the little leaguers and you get to a major league. So the bigger the contractor, the bigger the contractor, is you get a better contractor. That's what I'm going to suggest. So put them all together, and get one contractor, do all three, you'd be better off, you'll do a better job. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Relay that message. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move eighteen, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Council discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance eighteen dash two thousand twelve, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance nineteen, two thousand twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating a hundred and fifty thousand from the General Capital Improvement Fund for improvements to the Candlewood Pump Station.
I open the hearing. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move nineteen, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance nineteen dash two thousand twelve, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance to law.
Ordinance twenty, two thousand twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating a hundred thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for improvements to the Treadwell Pump Station.
I open the hearing. Seeing no one, I close the hearing.
I move five, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty dash two thousand twelve, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance to the law.
Ordinance twenty-one, two thousand twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating two hundred and seventy thousand dollars from the General Capital Improvement Fund for improvements to Sampson Avenue.
I open the hearing. Mr. Harrington?
Is that improvement going from Woodland all the way to one twenty-four, or where is it going?
It's Tim Harrington of Cross Gates Road. You guys forgot to...
It's going from King's Road to Woodland.
King's Road.
King's Road to Woodland.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move five, one, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Council discussion?
Sampson Avenue is a, one of the main roads underneath that brings water from the pump or to the pump, to the tower, I should say, the water tower up in Midwood.
Yes, and we've met with Sal. He's expressed a concern that when the roads open, that we should make this part of our plan, although it was not reflected on his five-year capital plan for the Water Department, which is why it was a surprise when he raised that, when we presented the plans for review, because it wasn't on his five-year plan, which is kind of the triggering event that when we want to piggyback with other utilities, we normally coordinate their capital plan to our, the road reconstruction plan. He didn't have it on his watch list for the five-year, the next five-year period. When the plan was sent to him for review, he expressed a concern about the stability of the pipes underneath and the fact that the earthquake in Maryland like two years ago may have disturbed the pipes. So I believe Bob has been working on a plan with Sal as to how we incorporate the water main work together with the road reconstruction work.
Okay, so that's in the works to make sure we do things in the right order if necessary. Other discussion? Jeanie?
Is that cost that you were just talking about included in the two hundred and seventy?
The water main replacement, no.
It was not.
Well, this is a different pot. This is coming out of the general capital.
Right.
We do have water capital dollars, even with the hundred and fifty being spent this evening, we'll have approximately seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars left. And each year in the budget, we normally raise about two hundred thousand, so we'll have approximately nine hundred thousand in January of two thousand and thirteen. The magnitude of that investment will be significantly under that. What we will do is continue to work with Sal, and obviously it doesn't make sense to pave the road and then dig it up again and do the water.
Exactly.
So we would do it at the same time. The engineers have been meeting with Sal on it. But it would be helpful if the operating departments included projects like this on their five-year plan, because that's kind of a tip to the engineer to say, there's a need here. And Sal said he had it in his file, but it didn't help us that it was in his file, but not in his plan.
So the steps here are to analyze it, and if it is necessary, we will be adopting an ordinance to fund that.
Out of a different pot, and do the both projects at the same time. Bob is shaking his head, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Okay, roll call vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-one dash two thousand twelve, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law.
Ordinance twenty-two, two thousand twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending chapter one ninety-five dash twelve A of the Borough Code on土地land use regarding zoning permit applications to increase fees.
I open the hearing. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
I move five, two thousand twelve.
Second.
Council discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-two dash two thousand twelve, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance to the law.
Ordinance twenty-three, two thousand and twelve, ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending ordinance two, two thousand and nine, to increase the salary range for positions of Recreation Director part-time and street sweeper part-time.
I open the hearing. Seeing no one, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance twenty-three dash two thousand twelve.
Second.
Council discussion?
This ordinance is basically setting the range limits of those particular positions.
Correct, and does not automatically adjust their salaries.
Right.
Any other discussion? Vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance twenty-three dash two thousand twelve, adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. And now we're on to round two of invitation for discussion. This is when you may step up and speak on any topic that's appropriate for the borough. And again, the same rules apply, that please state your name, your address, and as soon as you finish that, my clock will start, and you have three minutes to get your point across. Is there anyone, anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Runner?
Don Brunner, Twenty Rubman Drive. Are we going back to the once-a-week garbage pickup?
We are back. So if you didn't put your garbage out last Saturday for our neighborhood, you're, don't put it out this Saturday. It is once a week now.
The other question is, I understand New Jersey Transit was supposed to be doing something with the Elm Street overpass. Will that be happening anytime soon?
That is correct. They were supposed to be mobilizing shortly. It is this fall. That is a very good question. We will get the communication out once they confirm the date, but it will create a double dead end for Elm Street during the process, that there will be no through traffic on Elm Street as they do the overpass. They will not be allowed to, even able to do a single lane, so we'll have to get the word out when that starts. Also scheduled is repairs along Sam's favorite wall on King's Road, which will take some parking out of commission during that process, too. And we've talked about the fact that we don't want that happening during our Christmas sale season.
So Elm Street will be totally shut off?
Elm Street will basically have a, you know, you'll be able to get to the bridge from above and get to the bridge from below, but not through.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Harrington?
Tim Harrington, two Cross Gates Road. This ordinance is going to be introduced for a police chief. I was shocked to see that a full-bird colonel in the military police would only get two credits towards that application, which is the same as a starred sergeant.
We are pulling the ordinance, it is not going to be introduced tonight. We've came to the same conclusion, that it is not ready, and so we have a subcommittee of our liaisons to public safety, Ms. Tsukamoto, the backup liaison, Ms. Vitale, and Bob Landrigan. So they will be working along with Attorney Matt Jacoby and coming back to the council with a ordinance that be more, maybe a more appropriate.
Okay, that ordinance twenty-five, it's going to relate to political contributions, I think is in direct contradiction to the U.S. Supreme Court ruling that was just done in June, particularly as it relates to the county. I think that the council should get a written opinion from council, that it does not conflict with that when it's put together.
This will put us, this ordinance puts us, if that is the case, it puts us with a whole lot of other communities in New Jersey, because this is part of the best practices toolkit for receiving state aid.
Just so you know, there hasn't been a successful challenge in the state courts to the various pay-to-play ordinances that vary throughout municipality to municipality, county to county. You're right that there is that Supreme Court ruling, that deals with, but there's a difference, that deals with federal elections, this deals with state elections. So we have our own jurisdiction, our own courts that will deal with state election law.
I think...
There is a First Amendment issue, and that's been bantered about. My advice is, I don't know if Madison wants to be the test case in that, in that fight, but many, many towns have done it. And as the mayor said, best practices put out by the Division of Community Affairs mandates that towns have a pay-to-play ordinance in place, or they will be deducted points from their overall score, which could affect the ability to get state aid. So it's one of those, if you don't do it, there is some teeth with it from the state at this time.
I think it particularly relates to the county portion of that, and I believe it will be challenged, and it will be found unconstitutional. We all know super PACs, no matter how much I contribute, is fully allowable now. Comment on the lights for the gasoline stations. As you know, there is both federal and state law that requires that all gasoline stations be able to be read from the street, and I hope that our ordinance will be in full compliance with us.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Sam?
Sam Cerceau Park, Avenue of Madison. You know, we come to these meetings and all that, and when we make suggestions or recommendations, do you people like talk about them at the executive or?
It depends on what the suggestion is, if it's related to personnel or contracts or anything, it would be executive. If it's anything else, just like any, whether it's a conversation here or a conversation on the street, you know, elected officials are constantly absorbing, listening, and reacting, though you may not see something right away, but it, I think, always affects decisions going down, because we listen very well, I believe.
I'm glad you brought that up about the Elm Street, because I was going to bring that up, and let's make that happen. So you say it's happening, so. But another thing we talked about a few meetings ago, about the mailboxes in front of the post office, is that ever going to take place? I mean, there's a garbage can in one of the newsstands, it's disgusting, bees and all that, I mean, you know, Madison don't deserve that on Lincoln Place.
Yep, that's still, yep, that's still, we're moving along.
Second thing is, like I said, I'm in town, I walk town almost two or three times a week, right? There's bumblebees all over those garbage, and we ever go to these garbage cans, power washed and cleaned in the center of town? I mean, they're disgusting, some of them. I mean, you know, we make these recommendations, but I understand the Public Works guys are so busy up there on the forty-nine acres, they don't have enough time to, but they're bad. Take a look at these guys, especially one in front of McCool's Ice Cream Parlor in the car valve. I mean, like I said, bees in front of Romanelli's, it's disgusting. Madison don't deserve that.
We'll relay that message, thank you.
You know, ain't nothing better than sitting down and discussing, I mean, like with the police department. We just made a settlement since two thousand and ten or eleven. Why do we have, why do we have to get the lawyers involved, spend all this money on town attorneys? Can't we sit down and... Go through, can't we sit down and come up with some kind of, instead of spending all this money? Because I understand there's other suits going on in town. Am I right for saying there's some other suits that are pending, like with the Health Department? Some other things? Do we get suits pending coming up down the road?
There are suits pending in Madison, as in almost every municipality in the state.
I'm not talking about, I'm talking about Madison.
Their suits are pending.
Yeah.
Regretfully in this world, as Mr. Jacoby kind of alluded to, it's almost the exception when you don't have a pending lawsuit, and it's a sad case.
What I'm saying is, we have, we're going, we just went through this thing with the police department. I'd like to know what it costs us for attorneys. Now I understand the public works are going to have a problem. Why can't the two people sit down and come up with some kind of agreement? Mayor, Bob, you know, you ran on the word respect, and all you seem to worry, the impression I get is all you keep worrying is about that three minutes. And my three minutes is up, but I sit here two or three hours sometime waiting. Maybe if you put the time limit on the people that talk, you ought to put the time limit on people in the council, one in particular. Thank you.
Pleasure, and I don't think I've shown any lack of respect, but I'm listening. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting.
Okay, ordinance is scheduled for hearing. For first reading, have a hearing date set for September the 24th, 2012. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading and ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 24, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison supplementing, oh, this one's been removed. My apologies. Ordinance 25, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison establishing that a business entity which makes political contributions to municipal candidates and municipal and county political parties in excess of certain thresholds shall be limited in its ability to receive public contracts from the Borough of Madison in the County of Mars.
Mayor, I move ordinance 25-2012.
Second.
Council discussion. Seeing none, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Just one word. Once this passes, we have to file with the Secretary of State. There have been challenges to buy vendors. If they don't file with the Secretary of State, it's not a perfected ordinance, even if we pass it.
And ordinance 26, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $150,000 from the Water Capital Improvement Fund for several small projects on the five-year capital plan.
I move 18, 2012.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance 27, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison.
That's pulled. Yep. Our scorecard is all, I see today. Thank you. We were testing you.
Thank you. 27 has also been. Ordinance 28, 2012 is ordinance of the Borough of Madison amending Chapter 134 entitled Parking Lots.
I move ordinance 28-2012.
A second.
Discussion.
Just want to summarize what I said earlier. The disordinance is a better utilization of borough's parking spaces, and it will help meet commuter demands and generate additional $26,000 of revenue without raising commuter, merchant, and tenant parking fees.
Any other discussion? Vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move Resolution 215-2012, Resolution 216-2012 as amended, Resolution 217-2012 through, Resolution 225-2012, and Resolution 227-2012.
Second.
Resolution 228, that was for Mr. Haley.
226, we already voted. And 227 was.
And then 227 was a raffle at your place, and 228 is for Mr. Haley.
Got it, okay. And Resolution 228-2012.
Those have been posted.
Which are posted, yes.
Second.
Discussion. Just two things to point out to everyone. One, resolution supporting the adoption of idle-free zones, and that's just to reinforce for everyone's health that turn the car off when you're sitting, especially in school zones. And then also a resolution that which will be sent to the state requesting a 25-mile speed limit for the Madison Junior School. So both of them are for the health and safety of our childrens.
Question?
Yep.
Okay. I have a question for the attorney regarding Resolution 222 from the police department. The question is that, does the police department have the right to choose not to enforce the resolution due to extreme weather conditions, staffing concerns, and do they have the right to exercise their reasonable and practical judgment regarding enforcement?
Yeah, they have, the police always have discretion to enforce ordinances or laws. So if there is extenuating circumstances, for example, if there's a heavy snowfall and you have people, they're using diesel trucks to pile, they need to idle to take a break, that is appropriate.
Or during the school drop-off in pickup time in sub-freezing temperature or extremely hot weather.
For example, the diesel buses, et cetera, they do have that right to make that judgment call. That's why, you know, the law enforcement officers are trained to make judgment calls in conformance with, you know, weather conditions, et cetera.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Any unfinished business? Approval of vouchers?
Yes, Mayor. There's a, I'd like to remove 12-01701 for additional information.
And we'll have a motion to approve the vouchers minus that one?
Yes. Mayor, I move, we need to read the vouchers first?
I'm sorry, we do need to, yeah, sorry. You know, again, I skip a meeting, I'm really out of practice here.
Public Safety is $24,481.43. Health and Public Assistance, $19,131.48. Public Works and Engineering, $312,370. Community Affairs, $10,231.1. Finance and Borough Clerk, $3,394,169.38. Utilities will be $1,798,276.12, with a total amended amount of $5,558,992.12.
And now may I have a motion? Thank you.
Move the vouchers for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Vote.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?